Good evening, I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council. It is Monday, July 15th, 2019, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Council Herrera?
Here.
Council Parsons?
Here.
Council Smith?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Council President Freeman?
Here.
Council Reed?
Here.
And Council Kohler?
Yes.
Thank you all, if you are able, would you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so much. Under Special Orders of Business tonight, we don't have anything listed, but we do have one special item that I'm going to add, and then we'll go to our committees and the Volunteer of the Quarter, but our Special Order of Business tonight is to wish Tracy Davis a very happy birthday. Everyone, Tracy Davis! She is one of the reasons that this city does as well as it does because she is amazing. So, love you lots. Speaking of celebrating people, let's go to the Volunteer of the Quarter Award. This one is, I think in many people's opinion, including my own, long overdue, for a very special person who has given a great deal of the city, a volunteer who just shows up and gets stuff done, and has put his heart and soul into his neighborhood, parks, and our community, Mr. Darryl Richardson. He was nominated to be the Volunteer of the Quarter by several people, and I'm going to have some of you come up and read your nominating letters, and then embarrass the cookies out of him, and then we'll make the presentation of the award. So, to lead off, Gary Whelan, you wanted to read your letter, is that correct? No?
No, I did give Darryl a copy so he can read it.
Oh, he can read it!
Thank you.
But he received a letter from Randy and Sheri Miller, nominating you for the Volunteer of the Quarter for all the work you've done at the Kaiser Rotary Amphitheater, Dog Park, and most of all Sunset Park, from Rich Walsh and Clint Holland. Let's see, the one from Gary Whelan reads, "This letter is sent to nominate Darryl Richardson to be recognized as Volunteer of the Quarter. Darryl's service to Kaiser extends far beyond one quarter. For nearly three decades, Darryl almost single-handedly performed any and all maintenance done at Sunset Park. Additionally, he was a lead volunteer for projects to build Kaiser Rapids Amphitheater, The Big Toy, as well as water lines and irrigation systems for the Dog Park and Rotary Arboretum. Always willing to step forward to get things done without expecting anything in return, Darryl used his skills and knowledge to benefit Kaiser citizens. Darryl is the poster child for volunteer and deserving of this recognition, a Volunteer of the Quarter." We have another one, let's see. Matt, did you want to read yours? Come on up. Matt Lawyer also turned in a letter of recommendation. Have him read this.
So, thank you, Madam Mayor, Council staff, and Darryl?
Hi, Mayor.
I think I'm the youngest of the nominees up here, but that doesn't, I think, take away from the experience and the amount of appreciation I think that, as a member of the Parks Board, we all share. Darryl's done nothing but tried to keep us honest throughout all the work I've done in the Parks Board over the last five years. He's been an advocate for Sunset and the rest of Kaiser Parks for many, many years beyond that. Going back to when I was a kid, riding bikes down at Sunset, I can clearly remember some days with my cousins being advised and/or counseled by Mr. Richardson, who at the time I didn't know, he was just the grumpy guy that lived next to the park. But that wasn't even part of my nomination, but as I've thought about it, you know, over the last couple of years, and, you know, that's the kind of dedication I think that has made Kaiser a special city to live in and made Sunset one of the premier parks in our city. And there's a lot more that we could go on and on and on about, especially when somebody dedicates as many decades to our city and its citizens and just our way of life. And so, it was a pleasure, Madam Mayor, I agree with you 100 percent, it was a long time overdue for Darryl to be recognized for the work that he and his family have done down at Sunset, and I can tell you he'll be greatly missed by some, not so many of the wealthy kids like myself, but regardless, his legacy lives on, and I very much appreciate the time and effort he has put into Sunset and the rest of the parks in Kaiser.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Clint, did you want to say anything?
Everybody else has said it, but...
Of course you do!
I've known Darryl for a long time. All the things that he's done, he still continues to do and help those projects even after the fact, give you for instance, he's there every concert, he's the anchor of the concession stand for us, he takes care of the inside, the staff, everybody, and I can't thank him enough for all the things that he has done over the years, including what he's doing right now to help at the amphitheater.
So with that, thank you very much, Clint. Is anybody else who wanted to chime in and thoroughly embarrass and roast him? Come on down.
Hi, my name's Terry Moore. I moved to Kaiser, I think, 18, 19 years ago. I live about a block away from Sunset Park. The first thing I did when we moved in, we walked down to the park and I met Darryl. He was my first Kaiserite that I met. He welcomed me to Kaiser, and, you know, he just represents everything good. I recently retired from Oregon State Parks, and parks couldn't operate without volunteers, and Darryl is just an example that, you know, he's been volunteering for, I don't know in that park anyway, for at least 30 years. And that's a neighborhood park, and it's wonderful, and I just want to thank Darryl and Shirley for that.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Barbara Smith, and I live on Sunset Avenue, just across the street from Sunset Park, and I've known Darryl for a mighty long time. I'm not going to tell how long, because that'll give away my age. And I just want to say this is going to be the end of an era, when and if, but probably when Darryl and Shirley move. It's not only that they've been stewards of the park and their community, but Darryl actually, for those of us who live close to the park, we feel safer because of what he's been doing, kind of watching out for everybody, and his wife Shirley as well. They're a team, and they're a great team. And it's going to be sad if no one takes up that task of maintaining the park and caring about it with so much love like they have over the years. So I just want to thank them from the bottom of my heart, and I know everybody else does too in the neighborhood. They're outstanding people, and we love them a lot.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm John Heeky, I'm Barb's nut-wife, I was going to say that, but husband. I've lived in the same house there 28 years, and Darryl and Shirley are the first people we met when we moved there. My son, who is 39 now, due to math, I'm not good at it, but he crashed his bike down there as well, broke his collarbone, and they brought him up to the house and introduced, you know, hey, we found your kid. So, that developed a lifelong friendship with him. And as everybody has said, they have done wonderful things there, and I think it even expands further than taking care of the park and watching it. It's been a connection with our family, and some of you have been down there for a night out. We have a family there, and they have been the hub of that family. So, I would like to thank you all and thank the Richardsons for what they've done.
So what I have is a very small token of our great appreciation for what you both have done for the city of Kaiser, for your neighbors and for the neighborhood, and yes, I've been to your National Night Out party. Hey, everybody, register for that, here's a little plug. And it's been a lot of fun, but that's not just a once-a-year thing, it's a year-round thing, although you've been snowboarding, I know, because I walk my dog by your house almost daily. So this, this small token, the certificate reads Volunteer of the Quarter, second quarter 2019, presented to Darryl Richardson with sincere gratitude and appreciation for your volunteer contributions to the Kaiser community. Darryl and Shirley, thank you. So I'm going to bring this up and make the presentation. Photo op! You know it's coming.
Thank you.
There we go. Want to hold that one and this smart clock? I should put it in your motorhome.
Yeah, that's true.
All right. Um, Council Herrera?
Yes, I would, listening to all these folks talk about how they met Darryl, I thought I would chime in, and my two cents, when I, 28 years or so ago, my very first year working for the city, I was working on a project with Kevin Wickman, so we were kind of familiarizing all the parks. And I remember going to Willard Park, or Bob Newton Park now, I remember going back there, and some guy says, "What are you doing here?" You know, he didn't know where I was, you know. And so I was kind of a new guy at the time, and when I went to Sunset Park, Darryl was just the opposite, came up, said hi to me, and asked me, you know, he was very friendly, and we started a relationship then that lasted for all these years and all the help that he's done. And I always remember that first time that we met, because you were the kind of, you know, you were the friendly guy, everybody else was asking what the hell I was doing, but you were like the opposite of what everybody was saying to me, so, and I'll never forget that. So, thank you for all you've done, Darryl.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Looking down the line. All right. So, what, do you want to share some of your plans with us, or, we know that you've made, come on up to the microphone and... So you've seen a lot of changes over the years?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I've been there 41 years, and I've been in Kaiser 52 years this time around. I grew up in Kaiser and boarded Kaiser, and I was going to get up here and made it, got a little spill, my name is Darryl Kaiser Oregon Richardson. Shirley says, "No, it's not a good idea." So, anyway, our plans, and we're actually not really on board, but what I'd like to do, and I'm speaking for myself, and I know Shirley will get on board, but I'd like to get an RV right on. Okay.
Here, folks.
I would like to get a...
I want you to trade him in Texas, that ain't going to happen anymore.
Hey, my roof's going back. Anyway, get an RV and come up here in the summertime, and I would like to be a caretaker, a seasonal caretaker of Kaiser Rapids, but that's just, you know, what I would like to do. Then I'd like to go to Texas, because our great-grandkids right here moved to Texas last September, and we used to have them every weekend, and it's taken a lot out of us, so we need to get a little closer, and then spend a lot of time in Texas, and then go back to Havasu, and then come up here. That's what I, that's really what I would like to do.
They're going to be on the road.
Yes.
Would you introduce us to these lovely young ladies?
This is Kaylee, Kaylee Adams.
Hi, Kaylee. Nice to meet you too.
This is Kayden Adams.
Hi, Kayden.
She's nine and six.
It's a pleasure to meet you too. We're glad you're here to celebrate your great-granddad and great-grandma. Thank you for joining us.
And that's kind of what I would like to do, is be able to kind of move around. We're getting up at the age that we need changes. We're selling our house because we need to downsize, and it's a couple of other reasons we're selling. So, that's kind of my plan, I know Shirley and I will be together. So, that's, and I, like I say, I've been here in this house 41 years, and, you know, it's family, Kaiser's family, I mean, everybody, I know everybody except the new council, and that's not a bad thing, I just haven't got to know them yet, but anyway, I love volunteering work, I, we've got the best volunteers ever, and thank you, Chief John, we've got the best police department that I know of.
You're here.
Because when we leave to go to Arizona, we lock the house up, and we feel very safe because we do have the chief that heads our back. So thank you, John.
It looks like a lot of neighbors watching out for you too, keeping an eye out.
Lot of love.
Well, thank you, Darryl. We wish you guys the best in your travels and whatever the adventures you collectively...
And I signed up to talk more about the park.
I've got that in my pile here. So we will take some committee reports and circle back. Darryl Richardson, Shirley Jashawn, ladies and gentlemen. We do have a couple of committee reports, some folks are here to talk about some issues, and we'll start off with our traffic safety report, that'd be David Dumpster and Pat Fisher. Come on down.
From the Traffic Bikeways Pedestrian Safety Committee. We had a problem presented to us last month, month before last, from some people who lived over on Fifth Avenue. And when I start talking about street names, if you don't know exactly where they are, let me know. Fifth Avenue, parallels river roads, back a few blocks, a long straight stretch, right in the middle of it, Huckleberry makes a T-intersection with Fifth Avenue.
Honeysuckle.
Honeysuckle makes the T-intersection with Fifth Avenue. At that place is the entrance to Willamette Manor Park, which has been worked on this year, and it's going to be continued to work on, I guess the tennis courts are going to be improved, and a swimming pool. Holiday Swim Club owns a pool right at that point. The club is open May through September, the swim club. It's a private club with membership, and they've opened their membership up apparently to the city of Salem. So they have an increased number of people showing up from all over the city in cars, which has caused a problem. At that intersection, you have three unmarked crosswalks, two of them across, well, you have an intersection, so you have an unmarked crosswalk across Huckleberry, and two of them across Fifth Avenue. The city's pump house is also there. It's an odd intersection, lots and lots, this is, again, some of this has been reported to us, lots of pedestrians, lots of children crossing back and forth on Fifth. Fifth has seen an increase in traffic, and according to the people who live around there, people are driving too fast for the conditions. Also now because of more people, a parking problem, so that both sides of the street and the surrounding streets are pretty solid with cars, which narrows the street down. So it's dangerous for people walking, especially little kids who don't pay the most attention. So, we're not, no one's been injured there yet, there hasn't been any big wrecks or anything, but we're trying to be a little proactive. And this was brought to us by some individuals, and then the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association presented more information and represented the people in that area. We've done this now, two meetings, we considered the issues, and we wanted to make the following recommendations to the city council. Well, actually, there's three things going to happen, but two of them for tonight. We had a motion to have the city council direct Public Works Department to paint the curbs on the corner of Huckleberry and Fifth, both corners, about 15 feet back from the corner on both sides, and a strip about 10 feet wide across from the north sidewalk, a spot where they would stop parking in front of the pool, because when the people come out of the pool, it's solid cars, there's no, people have to come out between cars or actually go down to somebody's driveway down the street to get back out on the street. So we would like you to direct the Public Works Department to do that. Secondly, we would like to ask you for some money. We'd like to put in a flag system, and I gave you a handout that was in the Kaiser Times a couple of months ago. Pedestrian flag system allows the person to grab a small flag, about 30 inches long, either red or yellow, and to indicate that they're going to cross the street, and one of the, these are legitimate crosswalks, problem is, is a lot of people don't know that, that pedestrian has the right of way there, and it's hard to see them if there's cars parked right up to the corner. They said, I should ask you for up to $500. I really think the whole project, as an experimental project, could be done for under 120, but that's what we're asking you for. This would allow, well, hopefully, places they've used it before said it's a lot safer. The, those are the two things we're asking you for. The third thing that may happen is that the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association is looking at the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program of ours, the city's, and filing an application on that for some improvement, traffic calming and pedestrian bikes and things, improvement to that intersection in that area. And I don't know how familiar you are with that program. I wasn't, but I am now. So they're going to be looking at that, and we volunteered to work with them, to help them in any way we can with the, there's some paperwork, it's not tremendous, but there's work involved in submitting an application. They'll present that to their group in September. That's a long-range plan. What we were asking for tonight's immediate, like for the next six, eight weeks, to make sure nothing goes wrong there. The, okay, that's basically it.
All right. So we'll press pause.
That's my half, and then she has another, we have another report.
The rest of the story?
No, that's a different story than that.
Different story.
Well, or I could, or I could add a little detail or background to that, too, yes, the, as David said, first the citizens, and then the citizens as well as the Neighborhood Association came to the committee meetings, June and July. The, to describe these issues with the traffic and the site distance and so forth, and he outlined the measures that we've taken. It became quite a lengthy and detailed discussion that we had, just because it sort of divides into issues that need to be taken in the long term because of the existing process with the Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan. So that, that's what our committee members did agree to help the Neighborhood Association with as a long-term approach. And we, then we also, of course, asked the Public Works Staff, what can we do this year? I mean, and recognizing this is a seasonal problem, it's really primarily between May and September when the swim club is active. So that's how they came up with a couple of these solutions that were, that was voted on by the committee. The reason that we have to come to council is because they're outside of this process of the traffic, Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan, so that's why we come to you with those two things. And we did talk, too, and we're kind of unable to answer some of these issues about who's really responsible. We have the swim club, and their decision to broaden the geographic area of their membership that has caused this traffic impact within the neighborhood, yet the citizens of the neighborhood are, have the responsibility, I guess, to try to work this issue. But we weren't really sure what the responsibility of the swim club was, like, for instance, what would the responsibility of a business be if they changed their business model and had a larger influx of traffic? Would that just be okay, or would there be something that they're supposed to do before taking an action that affects the neighborhood like that? That we really weren't able to answer. So that was a couple of things that I wanted to add to David's report. And one other issue that our committee discussed was the issue of sidewalk obstructions, and I picked that up as an issue that the council had discussed, and it was reported in Kaiser Times, June 14th. And just to let you know that that was an issue that our committee has discussed a few times in the past, not triggered so much by the basketball hoops, but by garbage cans being placed in sidewalks or in bike lanes on the trash pickup day, and how we could come up with a more strategic education plan for the public about the best places to put their trash can, depending on whether they have a curb in front of their house, or a sidewalk, or no curb, or no sidewalk. So we were kind of starting to work on some of those scenarios and hoping to approach the trash hauling association, of which Lawrence Sanitation is one member of, and also wondering, then, if this should be something that's taken up by the city as a more comprehensive look at the sidewalk obstructions, whether it's cars, or basketball hoops, or garbage cans, or other, or overgrown vegetation, and maybe we could come up with something that addresses it in a positive way, holistic way.
Okay. So, let's back up to the first one, which was Fifth Avenue. And was anybody from the Holiday Swim Club, have they come to the committee?
No.
They have not, okay. And then, you know, I've been, lived in that neighborhood for a long, long time, so, you know, they have swim meets, there's always been a lot of traffic along that street, especially around the summer, and the narrower street definitely, when you have less space to drive, it does kind of narrows it up. So there's been no crashes, no injuries, but the question, one of the questions I heard was regarding line of sight at the corner. Is that something that you could check into and see if they're, needs pushed back from it, or is that data you already have?
I'm familiar with the intersection. I attended the meeting last Thursday night, I've not been down to that intersection since then. The committee's recommendation to paint the curbs, I support that. That will improve at least an area for the pedestrians to walk and be more visible to cars going up and down. So I'm happy to do that, that's not a problem. I will say that the pedestrian flags, I do not support. I've read numerous articles, and in fact, I did not dig it up today, but there's an email from an employee with Oregon Department of Transportation stating that they're basically in miserable failure. They've been noted to be taken and thrown at vehicles, they disappear, people ignore them, they become toys for kids, not what they're intended for. However, if the council wishes to try it, I'm happy to acquire the materials and put them out there and see what happens.
So...
have swim meets, there's always been a lot of traffic along that street, especially around the summer, and the narrower street definitely, when you have less space to drive, it does kind of narrows it up. So there's been no crashes, no injuries, but the question, one of the questions I heard was regarding line of sight at the corner. Is that something that you could check into and see if they're, needs pushed back from it, or is that data you already have?
I'm familiar with the intersection. I attended the meeting last Thursday night. I've not been down to that intersection since then. The committee's recommendation to paint the curbs, I support that. That will improve at least an area for the pedestrians to walk and be more visible to cars going up and down. So I'm happy to do that, that's not a problem. I will say that the pedestrian flags, I do not support. I've read numerous articles, and in fact, I did not dig it up today, but there's an email from an employee with Oregon Department of Transportation stating that they're basically a miserable failure. They've been noted to be taken and thrown at vehicles. They disappear, people ignore them, they become toys for kids, not what they're intended for. However, if the council wishes to try it, I'm happy to acquire the materials and put them out there and see what happens.
So.
Madam Mayor? I want to, the neighborhood, this is a big problem. The two things I brought up that we're asking for immediate response are rather minor. And actually, we discuss things, and we try not, or steer the discussions away from solutions, because people always immediately come in and say, "Well, if we put in a crosswalk signal, or if we put in speed bumps, or if we," and people have solutions rather than analyzing the problem. And then this action plan involves the people with Public Works and actually doing a lot more research and studying which one of those solutions may be appropriate for this situation. So that was where we'd be, assuming Public Works would have a major role in the traffic, because they know more about it than we do, I mean, what they put in.
Absolutely. But it sounds like looking at the, painting the corners regarding the line of sight, because it impacts everybody, everybody who's traveling by whatever mode, to be able to see around that corner. So that.
The intersection's a bit interesting, because directly across from the south side of the intersection, where the curb drop is, there's a driveway.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, so that compounds the problem, if you will, in trying to make a safe place, ADA compliant, wise to cross the street. I need to do a little more research. There may be a way to do, quote, "an angled crosswalk," although unmarked crosswalk on the south side of Honeysuckle, although I don't, honestly, my instincts tell me that won't work, it's too much of an angle. But on the north side, we can certainly put it in a queue to update the ramps, that will help, as I mentioned at the meeting the other night. That will help get people's attention, because bright new concrete with the red truncated domes, that will help people from not parking that close to the ramp. It's illegal to do that now. The problem is, people don't know that, and they don't pay attention, if you will. Painting the curbs will get their attention, and then updating the ramps will even encourage that more.
So it sounds like we have short-term, and then the plan will be a more comprehensive conversation with Traffic Safety Bike Pad and the neighbors, neighbors around there. Councilor Kohler, you added a comment or question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I would like to say thank you to Bill Lawyer for coming to the Traffic Bike Pad Committee meeting Thursday. He didn't have to do that, but his presence there made that a whole lot easier. I really, really appreciate that. There was a lot of discussion about all, a lot of different things that could be done. So after the meeting, I actually went down to the intersection and looked at the area. I interviewed a member of the staff at the pool, and he said that there are basically three cars that are running through there like the house is on fire. One of them, a red Honda without a front plate, or a front bumper, and I think that we have an idea of where that person lives. I don't know if there's a way that we can go visit them and say, "We're gonna flatten your tires," or whatever. See how you run with flat tires. But there may be an opportunity to, to visit some isolated people and maybe slow some of that down. The other challenge is, it's, it's three months during the year, and some of the solutions would affect the whole year, maybe not positively. So there's a lot of things to consider, and again, I'm very grateful for Bill being there, because that made a whole lot of difference, but.
Right. Question, other question? Council President Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have a question. I know when I used to be the council liaison, we did talk about the flags, and we talked about them on River Road and other places, and it just didn't come to fruition. And I wish I could think of a little town that, no, it's a different one, up Mount Hood, where we used to hike, and they had the flags on both sides, and it was a very small, narrow street. And unfortunately, when you picked up the flag, the cars didn't stop. And so I worry that just because someone picks up the flag, that they have that false sense that just because you stick the flag out, cars are gonna stop. And so I'm not opposed to it, I just think we need to do a lot more research, because I just don't want someone to have false sense that I've got this flag and someone's gonna stop. And yeah, there's, you know, cans on both sides, so when you cross the street, you put your flag in, and hopefully then when you come back, you do the same thing. So I know at that time, it wasn't successful based on many things, and so it has been talked about, and I appreciate it keep coming back, because sometimes things that keep coming back come to fruition. So I just want to thank you for your guys' continued work on safety throughout the whole city.
All right. Thank you very much. So, yeah, sounds like one step forward and then continued work together. Thank you. All right. Let's go to Planning Commission. Mr. Callier.
So, Madam Mayor.
Oh, yes. Councilor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So would we make a motion to ask the, Mr. Lawyer, to paint those curb areas, or how, what's the process on that? It's my question.
You're gonna, Mr. Lawyer?
As the Public Works Director, I have the authority to establish a no parking zone within 50 feet of any intersection within the city. I don't regularly exercise that authority, because it's an impact to the people that live on these streets. If it's River Road, Lock Haven Cherry Avenue, Collectors, Arturials, roads like that, I'm much more willing and will exercise that authority. For a local street like Fifth Avenue, Holly Hawk, Honeysuckle, that area, I really like to look for the council's support, if not direction, to do that. As I mentioned the other night at the meeting, there was a gentleman that was interested in having a no parking zone established on Shoreline at Raffel. And I told him the same thing I just told you folks, and he, I said, "You bring me a petition." And you taught, and this gentleman didn't live anywhere near the intersection. He had good, valid reasons for it, safety issues, things like that. He went out, gathered a bunch of signatures, brought it to me, I presented it to council, we established a no parking zone. So I'm more than willing to paint that corner within about 15 feet, like the committee recommended. I don't necessarily need council's direction, but I certainly would like council's support, so that if the people that live there, that may not know this is coming, have a problem with it, then I can at least have that backing.
So with council concurrence or consensus to look into the options regarding, you know, at what distance it would be appropriate, and also to please make contact with the swim club themselves and get their input, because they are, they are heavily utilized, all of their neighbor, their neighbors and their guests are there all summer long, so hear from them as well. And then bring recommendations back if you feel it would be necessary to do so.
I understand. I will say that, I'm trying to be careful how I say this, I don't want to offend the council, and you, Madam Mayor. We've got three weeks before we come back for another city council meeting. I can have the curbs painted a week and a half at the most.
That's true, you could.
So do you, I mean, I can take action quickly.
All right. Paint them.
Okay.
I'm looking down the line going, "Go."
Okay, I will, and I will certainly contact the swim club before we paint something on that side of the street.
And the neighbors.
At least identify the area we are thinking makes sense, and at least inform them, if not get their buy-in.
And also, they may wish to have a pickup-drop-off zone.
Yeah.
Right in front of the pool, because as they're loading and unloading kids and all their gear, and their swim towels, and their flip-flops and everything, sometimes it's nicer to just come up and plop all that in.
Sure.
Okay. Great, thank you. Mr. Callier, planning?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the city council, my name is Mark Callier. I'm a resident of Kaiser and currently on the Planning Commission, and I first wanted to congratulate Tracy on her 32nd birthday. Also wanted to mention to Daryl that as a fellow husband, winning two out of three is actually really good, so go with it. We met July 10th, and the one item before the council, before the Planning Commission was dealing with some tax amendments for Area D, commonly known as the Jug Handle, the undeveloped area, just west of I-5, south to Shumawa. It's currently owned by confederated tribes who've gone around, and also solets jointly. They came to, through their developer, to the Planning Commission, to the city staff, to the Planning Commission, asking for some flexibility in the development of that area. And what they're asking basically was not a, really a change of what they could do if they owned it and operated it as one entity, but if they were going to, for example, have one owner of a gas station, one owner of a restaurant, one owner of a service area, the staff did not feel comfortable if that was currently in, in the business park zone, industrial business park zone. So we discussed that, we had a public hearing, no, there was no public that attended, but in our discussion, we were concerned about traffic possibilities, which quite frankly, had already been included in the master plan for that area. What would it be now? Over a decade ago.
A while.
And also, impact on businesses and River Road, so on, so forth. This discussion ended in a vote. We did vote to recommend to the city council that adopt the tax amendments that were provided by the staff, which basically allows for automotive services such as car wash, tire, battery sales, quick lube, those kinds of things as included in the zone, and they could be under different ownership. So just really clarify that. Gives them an opportunity, and gives us as a city, an opportunity as a development pathway, I think, as it was described to us, that maybe we haven't had in the past. And this area was always intended, at least through my time on council and on the Planning Commission, as being a flexible area, and it's intended for automobile servicing, it's not intended for heavy trucks, it's not a truck stop.
Very good. So we'll be seeing that come to council August 19th. I was looking for a round, and I got a specific. Okay. That is good news. Thank you.
And then coming up on our August meeting, will be August 14th, we'll be discussing the Kaiser revitalization plan. We'll be looking at that for the first time.
All right.
As a final, as a first time. We've seen a lot of drafts.
Yes, a lot of drafts. Any questions for Mr. Callier? All right, thank you so much, appreciate it. I'd like to recognize County Commissioner Kevin Cameron and offer courtesy if he would like to, if there was an issue, wanted to come and address the council, give them a chance to do that at this time.
Mayor Clark, members of the council, thank you for having me here tonight. I just wanted to come by, because I know on the agenda tonight was an item that is important to, not only to Marion County, but to Kaiser. We will be having our 11th Annual Second Chance Breakfast here this year, and we are going to have it at the Kaiser Center. And the reason we chose the Kaiser Center was because for the last 10 years, we've had those meetings in Salem. And one of the things that I got a chance to do was take over the Public Safety Council from former Commissioner Carlson. And last year, got to experience the Second Chance Tour in the state of Oregon, where we went out to different cities around and, and shared what opportunities are to employ people that need a second chance. And came back, and this year, I thought, well, we need to take what we've been doing in Marion County, pretty much Salem-centric, start to spread that around. And we thought the first place was to come to Kaiser and do our breakfast here on October 1st. And on your agenda tonight was an ask for your support to be a sponsor of that in any way that you could with the facility. So I wanted to say thank you and allowing me to come and share that tonight. I know that'll be an action item that you'll be doing later on, so be happy to answer any questions about the event or anything that's going on. Well, excuse me, there are some things going on I can't answer.
All right, thank you so much. Any questions for Commissioner Cameron? The reentry initiative has been an incredibly successful and growing partnership since its inception, and investing in people's lives and truly helping people not only turn around, but be able to be very successful going forward, and be able to give them a chance, but then they give us a chance to enjoy their gifts and talents in a way that hadn't been possible prior to that. So thank you for continuing Commissioner Carlson's great work and the late Senator Jackie Winter's work in this area.
You're welcome, and we are gonna do it in honor of Senator Winter, so that'll be great. And Councilman Herrera, thank you for service on, on the Public Safety Coordinating Council, and Chief Teague, in the past, your service, too, I really appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Report, Mr. Lawyer. Mr. Matt Lawyer.
Council staff, for the record, Matt Lawyer, Kaiser Parks Advisory Board. Normally, I don't have to use my notes, but I'm going to. We met on July 9th, normal meeting. We had a really good presentation discussion from Carol Dorfler from the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association. West Kaiser is always one of those neighborhood groups we can continually count on to bring us good discussion items, and I appreciate Carol and those folks from coming and talking about some issues specifically related to Sunset and the future there. Thanks for leaving, Daryl. Just kidding, I'm gonna miss him. Talked about some irrigation schedules and a couple other things specifically related to the tennis court and some ongoing maintenance. It actually ended up being a really good conversation between Robert and Carol, because Robert already had all the answers and Carol had really good questions, but thank you for being there. Had a discussion with a young man named Spencer Mills, who's doing an Eagle Scout project. It's going to create some storage down at the Kaiser Rapids, or Kaiser Rotary Amphitheater, and so he's putting together what hopefully may be the first youth grant application, which you guys will be talking about a little bit more later this evening. Wayne Frye, who is on the Parks Board, put together soccer out of Country Glen a number of years ago, and it's getting to the point where it's deteriorating, and so he's looking at doing something a little bit new. And so he brought up some ideas about some new goals out there. It's gonna be about $3,000, $3,500 to get good aluminum, well-built goals out there. He came with a plan that wasn't fully fleshed out, and he did some work, but he's gonna go back to the drawing board on that sum. Jeff Davis, who has been just probably the second most energetic person behind Mark Callier as far as getting really cool projects done, came and talked to us about the completion of his exercise stations. So Jeff Davis, along with the Kaiser Rotary and many of the Rotarians, Mark Callier, Randy Miller, Herc Reynolds, and so on, finished that project last week. One was completed at Country Glen Park and the other at Claggett Creek Park, so pretty excited there. I relayed a message from one of the members of the community about Bear Park, it was kind of falling a little bit behind, but Robert already had a plan to get that fixed up. And then the rest of the parks, just very general, minor stuff. It's nice to, you know, complain about a couple tree limbs here and there versus stuff we used to talk about two or three years ago. So the park staff is doing an absolutely fantastic job there. Beyond that, I think we just had some normal routine business. Robert reported on the process for Armament Manor Tennis Court is out to bid. The dirt work at some of the other sports facilities is being complete, meaning putting the dirt back, making nice and good, smooth transitions. We discussed some information related to the Charge House and some additional information related to a couple other ongoing projects. Beyond that, it was a pretty quiet meeting, we were done by just after 7:00, so unless there's any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Matt? All right, thank you so much, we appreciate all the tremendous work that you, the board, and our park staff continue to deliver for us. Thank you. That is all the committee reports I had, until we do ours at the end of the meeting. So this takes us to public testimony. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for public hearing. We have one public hearing scheduled tonight, the proposed text amendments to the Kaiser Development Code, Section 2.118, Urban Transition. And I have two people signed up, and who wants to go first, Daryl or Shirley?
My name's, oh, yes, my name's Daryl Richardson, and I live at Rivercraft Drive. My name's, oh, yes, my name's Daryl Richardson, and I live at Rivercrest Drive. Madam Mayor, council, staff. I don't want to do what I really have to do right now, but I've got to do it. We're selling our house, which you know, and what we would like is the powers-to-be to think about what we asked you in the first place, and you said, no, we cannot have the new owners drive back to the back, to the back of their property. I've got garages back there. I've been driving back there for 41 years. Never had a complaint. Other peoples had complaints, and I know that there's a history behind what happened in 2008 to 2011, and I had to get some type of agreement so I could continue driving back there. And I had to sue the city of Kaiser to do that, and I didn't want to. It cost part of my retirement. It had hard feelings between some of the staff and the mayor at that time. And I just want to be able to say to the new owners, yes, you can drive beside the fence that I built to get to your backyard. That's all I'm asking. I don't drive through the park. I drive beside my fence. The only time I drive through the park is to pick up the picnic tables, to put them up in the winter time, and to put them back down in the spring. And there's no reason to drive through the park. And I don't know where anybody thought that you had to drive through the park to get to the backyard except along the fence. And I know the executive session, you made a decision to deny the new owners a license like I've got, and I'm sorry that you did that because you don't know who the new owner's going to be, and I don't know who the new owner's going to be. It could be one of you. Would you like to be able to drive back to your garages in the back? I've got an antique truck that I drive back there, and I just, you know, I don't think it's really fair without interviewing Shirley and I or the new owners and saying, no. I know I signed an agreement back in 2011 because I was actually forced to because I had somebody to make, had to make a decision so I could get on with my life and the city could get on with what they do. And I just would like to, I know I signed an agreement, and I'd like to have somehow have that modified so the new owners has a chance to be able to drive back to their garages in the back. And they don't have to drive through the park. They drive along the fence, and that's what it is. And I sent out some pictures of what the Sunset Park used to look like. I've never asked for any money. I've never asked, I've went through, I'm on my third mower. I've never asked for any gas money. I've never asked for one thing from the city of Kaiser. Now, I am asking for something from the city of Kaiser, and that is, would you consider having the new owners be able to get a license to drive to the backyard? And nobody needs to drive through the park anymore, except for the new owners. The neighbor, Jason, he's got access to his backyard, but anybody driving to their backyard has to go across private property. And the only way, my neighbor said anybody could drive across there, be emergency vehicle, and that's the same way I feel, or maybe the new owners, you know? So, I would like to have you consider my request about letting the new owners have a license to drive to the backyard. And thank you.
Thank you, Daryl. Senator?
Madam Mayor?
At this point, we do have a signed agreement, and at this point, that is, as far as I know, we have, the decision was made to let the agreement stand between the city and your family as well regarding the property. I was on council when the agreement was signed. I don't know that anybody else on council was there at the time. And I do, I agree with you, that was difficult, very difficult process and a very difficult conversation, and that was not how either you nor we like to have to do, but it got very complicated. And some of the records, as I recall from way back when, were difficult to find indeed. So, I do recall that. I know that the agreement that was put together, if I remember correctly, was to ensure that you had access to the back as you needed to. What you're saying, though, is you don't need to drive through the park, so I'm a little confused because I thought this was about driving through the park to get to the back. Am I missing something?
No. It, driving through the park, it's across the bottom part of the park to the neighbors. I drive along, I drive through the park next to the fence that I built. And then I've got a, you can see on the one picture, there's a blacktop driveway that goes into my backyard and the garages back there. I don't drive through the park. I mean, you know, that's very confusing. I drive alongside the fence in the park, but I don't drive over any grass that's in the park except from the entrance to my driveway. And I don't know why.
There's the driveway right there.
Yes. I don't understand why it's a major decision. It's not holy land. It's nobody, Indian burial ground. It's nothing but a driveway to my backyard. I mean, it's pretty simple that, you know, that's what it is, and I maintained it. The county told me I could drive back there. The city of Salem, who took care of the county, said I could drive back there. And then somebody complained about somebody driving across the park, and that's when it all happened, the change of lock and everything else. And that's why then I proceeded to sue the city so I could have access through my backyard. And I don't, and the new owners don't need to drive across the park except alongside the fence, and that is the park property. And I don't know.
That's, I guess we have different definitions of through the park. However, at this point, what I would ask staff if there's any clarification we need to understand, but I think we've, what we heard during the executive session was, this is to be able to drive from Rivercrest to the back.
Yes.
Okay. So, it's through the park that way, not through across, not sideways.
Right.
It's from the street to the back of the property.
And Shannon drew the map originally for me to follow, to go through beside my fence through the park. He had a, not a ride, a path for me to follow, and that's what I do, except for picking up picnic tables and putting those out in the summer and winter and so forth, and to pick up dead branches and stuff to maintain the park.
And there are conditions, as Mr. Lawyer has said, with all of our parks, if some, a vehicle needs to take care of particular tasks or particular needs, to come and talk to Public Works about that. But as a matter of course, it is by request and under certain circumstances. So, it's not a guarantee. It is, you have to come to this, talk to the city to make sure that it's done safely for the property owner, for the city property, and for, you know, for the right reasons. We don't, we want to make sure that when people are driving for parks, it's done in a way that's not going to create damage or, not as a matter of course, that it is an exception rather than the rule, but it is, it does happen when necessary. And the same thing is going to be extended to anybody living around Sunset Park, just like other parks, to be able to use that under certain circumstances, but not as a matter of course. It's not a guarantee in all the other parks, we have, the property owners need to come talk to the city.
Well, I agree and disagree because I think every park should have its own saying. You know, if I hadn't drove back there for 41 years, I would not have a problem. And I think, and driving through the park doesn't hurt anything. It's never hurt anything. Somebody complained one time, and then that kind of took away everybody's right to do what we used to do. Now, you hear, you listen to somebody complain on one hand, but on the other hand, somebody that does good, it's, no, can't do that. Well, I'm sorry. I'm real sorry. Thank you for the award tonight, and I just got a bad taste in my mouth because if you cannot modify or say, yes, we can talk to the new owner and maybe give him a license, yes, but if you just say, okay, nope, we can't do it, you know, has this all been about nothing? Really?
Okay. Ms. Daryl Park. Good evening, council, Madam Mayor, staff. My name is Shirley. I am the other part. And I wasn't going to do this, but, and I fully understand that the license that we have now that we are using, I totally understand that. I also understand that the proposal that we submitted a couple weeks ago was denied, and thank you for Shannon Johnson's patience and understanding with that. Anyway, but you know, even large corporations sometimes have to reconsider policy or protocol and make changes. I would just ask that you consider this as a possibility. And I don't want to say what great things we've done. We have been, I'm glad, and we did it because we wanted to, not because we wanted to get something back for it. But it is nice when good things happen to good people, and it's just, it just needs to be, it just needs to happen. But I guess what I, what I would ask is that, this is hard, I'm sorry. Sunset Park would not be what it is today if it were not for Daryl. And, I mean, we, he took a belly mower, and there were bums down there, Daryl likes druggies, delinquent children. I mean, you couldn't even see the river from that park. It was 10 feet of wild blackberries. And he's done that, and he's maintained it. And I realize it's been recognized as volunteer, and that's appreciated. But again, just consider, if you would just consider the possibility of the new owner even applying for a license for it or making some kind of consideration. I mean, I understand executive decision was made, executive session, I realize that. But just, like I say, sometimes lots of folks have to make big decisions about big things, and sometimes it makes a big difference to the little people. And the other thing is that if this doesn't fall in our favor, excuse me, it's going to have a major, and I know it's, it's going to have a major financial impact on us for the rest of our lives, because no one's going to want to buy that house if you can't utilize the two garages and the carport in the back. It's like, well, what's that for? Well, you have to kind of walk your stuff around. That's kind of a no-brainer. So, thank you for your patience, for your understanding, and again, if you could just reconsider, reconsider the, reconsideration, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Let me see if there's any questions.
Jim Taylor, Kaiser, Oregon. Madam Mayor, thank you for the time. Staff, happy birthday. Nice to see you, chief. I knew this was coming up, so I wanted to be here. I was also on council with you, Kathy, when all this occurred. And for you counselors that weren't, it was a free-for-all down there. Bill can attest to the fact that there were keys. We didn't know where keys were. Everybody was making copies of keys and whatever. Daryl was not one of those. Daryl had his key, but there were other neighbors that were doing it, and that's the reason it came to a, to a point that we had to get some control of who was going back there and who wasn't. So, that's how this whole thing happened. And at the time, Bill, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I think staff didn't want anybody to have a key because it had gotten so out of control. Am I correct?
I think the Public Works Director at the time was opposed to it.
Right.
I was neutral.
Right.
I stayed out of it.
At the time, it was Rob Kissler. To my recollection, a lot of what we did was a bit of a compromise. Nobody was thinking about, Daryl wasn't thinking, Daryl and Shirley about selling or doing anything like that. But now that their life has changed and their plans have changed, they're in a bad position money-wise. Put yourself in that. I mean, if you had all this in the back that they have in the backyard that they've been able to access for 41 years before Kaiser was a city, in agreement with the county and everything at the time, and now things have changed for them, and they're finding it very difficult to sell their house unless that can be accessed, and if they do sell it, it's going to cost them a lot of money. I'm looking at this as what the right thing to do is. It has nothing to do with Daryl being a great volunteer. Let's just consider him a person who has used that for 41 years. He hasn't done anything to take care of the park. That really isn't coming into play here. But what does come into play is the fair thing to do for a property owner. This doesn't set a precedent. I don't know of any other properties next to a park that have those amenities that are landlocked. So, I don't think this is going to come up in other parks. So, I would think that we could, or you could come to some sort of a conclusion that the fair thing to do is to be able to, the new property owner, and make it very strict that they can continue to use that. They can only take, say, you can't have anything heavier than a half-ton or three-quarter-ton vehicle go down there. You can't let anybody else drive down there, and if any of those rules are broken, you lose that right. But to just say right off that we need to go by the agreement that was made at the time, which was a compromise, that now it's difficult for him to sell his property, or if he does, at a great financial loss, I think is unfair. So, we need to, you know, at the time, it seemed fair, but things have changed. So, is that fair today? So, rather than being real stringent on this, you know, I would hope that you could look at this and do what I think is the right thing. That's my opinion. And come to another compromise that would safeguard the city's property at the same time, allowing the new owner to be able to have access to something that's totally landlocked and is useless to them and will cost the Rogers a lot of money. So, that's all I have, and just a little history on why we got there and why we did what we did at the time. So, thank you very much.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? Thank you very much. I do remember there was quite a bit of traffic, and there was concern about the tree roots that were being driven over on a pretty regular basis, which was some of it. I would anticipate that a new property owner, working with the city on the layout of the land and the site, might have some, be able to work with us on options, on how they might be able to adapt their property and so forth. I'm not that familiar with the details of the property. I just remember from the back when I'd take the kids down there, and we knew they couldn't go past this fence. But if there are alternatives to be able to protect the trees and to be able to work with the... with the layout of the property, it's a very deep property, it's a very beautiful property, it's a highly desirable property, and has a great access to the river, which with the boat ramp now, a lot of people who had boats along the river and used to haul them up through their property now go down to Kaiser Rapids and use the boat launch there as well. So, that has eliminated a lot of need for people to be able to pull across property to get back onto River Crest or Shoreline or Rafael. So, that's been some of the benefits. But if there, you know, I don't know what the possibilities are, but a creative property owner, potential buyer who sees your property is gonna go, there are some things we can do. And I would encourage, I know our city staff will be more than happy to work with you on what the sites look like and what the possibilities are within, within the boundaries of the property.
That would be wonderful. And, and.
Oh, if you could be at the microphone, there are people watching, I'm sorry, but.
I, I apologize. I would more than welcome any and all of you at any given time to walk down to Sunset Park and see the pathway and see what the situation is so you can deal with it knowing what, you know, what area is involved and that. And that, anything would really sincerely be appreciated at this time, it really would. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Mr. Johnson, we good? All right. Thank you so much. Anybody else for public testimony before we go into our public hearing? Go ahead once, twice. We are going to go to item seven A, and I'm gonna open the public hearing for a proposed text amendment to the Kaiser Development Code, Section 2.118 Urban Transition, Modifying the Standards of the Urban Transition UT Zone. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Brown.
So, before you tonight is a proposed text amendment to one of our zones that is kind of a, a legacy zone, and that is the urban transition zone. This has been part of the original development code from the beginning, and it was created in the day and age when the north part of Kaiser was in transition, that there were not public services up there, there were not, it wasn't, it wasn't developed. And there were a lot of large pieces of property up there that were expected to develop. There are still some parcels up there, but the world has changed for Kaiser. So, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on March sixth. And at that hearing, basically, the Planning Commission hit the pause button and wanted to make sure that we had sent out individual notifications to every property owner. We had done the regular notice in the paper and on the website and that sort of thing. But the Planning Commission wanted to make sure that every single property owner that was being considered for this text amendment got an individual mailed notice. So, we did that. The Planning Commission then met again on April tenth. That hearing was after there was public testimony that was received. That hearing was carried forward. And with that input, we came back to the Planning Commission again on May eighth. So, the, the language before you is kind of a, the first part of a two-part series. And that is.
Two.
Yeah, right. So, basically, the Planning Commission suggested, and after some lengthy discussion on our part, the Planning, Planning Commission directed staff to proceed with a legislative rezone of the remaining urban transition property zones. And that, however, in that process, that we modify the zone, we're not abolishing the zone. We still have some decisions to make about growth and that sort of thing in our city. But they recommended that we make some modifications to make the language in it more current. You can see the bullet points there. There was irrelevant language in the existing text. There was some concerns about conditional use approval was required for virtually everything. So, basically, the text before you is, the text before you is, modernizes the language, it simplifies it, and it makes, gives more flexibility for property owners. This is to, in order to carry us forward from here, and that after we get done with some of the things, like our buildable lands inventory and our Kaiser revitalization plan, and with the changes that are coming from the state legislature in our development code, there are some things that are looming ahead of us that we need to be paying attention to. However, it is our direction and our intention to proceed with a legislative rezone of the existing urban transition property zones. Now, there was some testimony from property owners, and they mostly centered around the fact that they support the concept of transitioning the zone, but they wanted to make sure that they did not lose the ability for them to use their property as they currently do. Mr. Johnson graciously offered to write official letters on official stationery from the city attorney's office that basically outlines the fact that they would be able to continue their use. Commonly, we call it grandfathered, but they're legally established uses that are already there. And I, and honestly, we couldn't take those away from them unless we purchased that right. So, and I, and I tried to hint that there is no way that we are gonna spend money on that. So, anyway. So, with that, rather than going through each of the items that you see in the strikeout and the blue text, I would just open it up for any questions that you might have on any of the specific provisions that you may have.
Thank you. And I also want to commend the staff and also the Planning Commission for taking extra time to reach out to all of the property owners to ensure that they got notice and the opportunity to come in and hear about and then participate in the conversation about this change. So, I know that took an extra couple of months, a lot of extra time, but I believe anytime you engage our, our property owners and our community members more, it's, we're way ahead. Questions on the staff report? All right. I don't have anybody signed up to testify, is there anybody here who would like to testify on this issue? Seeing none. Don't rush all at once. I'd like to close the public hearing. Council President Freeman.
I move that the Kaiser City Council directs staff to prepare an ordinance with the findings to adopt the proposed revisions of the urban transition, Section 2.118.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council directs staff to prepare an ordinance with the findings to adopt the proposed revisions to the urban transition zone 2.118. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Let's go on to administrative action, item eight A, which is the waiver of the Community Center rental fee, Marion County Reentry Initiative Annual Community Breakfast. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we heard from Commissioner Cameron earlier, the Marion County Reentry Initiative Program, M.C.R.I., has requested a waiver of the rental fee and deposits for use of the two, of two iris rooms in the community center for the eleventh Annual Community Breakfast on Tuesday, October first. Event is free and open to the public. Mission of M.C.R.I. is to rebuild lives, promote community safety, and save taxpayer money. Program helps individuals who are re-entering our community after incarceration. The M.C.R.A. program is funded through donations and sponsorships. Additional program details are included in the attachment. Rental rates for Kaiser Community Center provide a twenty percent discount for Kaiser governmental partners like Marion County. Rental rate for two iris rooms for this event would be six hundred and forty dollars plus refundable security and cleaning deposits of eleven hundred and fifty dollars. Event staff is included in the rate. You have a number of options available to you. You can either grant the request and waive all fees, you can deny the request and charge all fees. You can waive the security and cleaning deposit but charge for the room rental fee of six hundred and forty dollars, which would include staffing, or you can waive all costs except staffing for eighty dollars. City Council does not have the ability to waive the requirement for a Certificate of General Liability Insurance. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any questions on the staff report? Council President Freeman.
I move that the Kaiser City Council select option one, which is grant the request for a complete rental fee waiver. So, that's everything for the M.C.R.I. Community Reentry Initiative Breakfast on Tuesday, October first, 2019.
Second.
This move and seconded that the Kaiser City Council grant the request for a complete rental fee waiver, option number one, the room rental, including staffing, security, cleaning deposit for the Marion County Reentry Initiative Annual Community Breakfast on October first. Any further discussion? So, we all know, I mean, the deposit is something that people normally get back anyway, and we know Marion County is good for any damages. So, this is not, this is not an issue in terms of the security for the facility. We know where they live.
We know where they live.
That's true. Yes. Council Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm, I just have a question about, does, do we as a city offer any other pecuniary support to, to this initiative, to, to this organization?
I don't believe so.
Okay. So, this would be basically our sponsorship of, of this, this effort?
That would be correct.
Thank you.
Council Herrera.
I would like to add, as member of the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council, you got it right. This reentry program is very valuable. I think it's a really good situation, what we're doing here with the folks who are trying to enter and get back into society. And not only that, the, the dedication for Jackie Winters is gonna be something that is a must to go and check out. It's a, and I'm speaking as, as a member of the council also with Commissioner Cameron. I happen to know some folks who were actually part of the reentry situation, and there, it's been made a world difference. So, that's my two cents, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Council President Freeman.
I would, I would echo with Council Herrera's comments. And I would encourage the public to attend. If you have not been able to attend, it is one of those really good-feeling breakfasts. But a couple of years ago, I had the opportunity to have one of the successful reentry gentlemen who was grateful to have a job and started out, you know, entry level and worked his way up to be a manager. And he said without this program, he isn't sure where he would be. And, you know, I think that's a true testament, and I know all the work that Jackie Winters did and Janet Carlson and the work that continues to go on. I'm honored that they actually selected Kaiser to have this event at because it's, it's a, you know, if you don't get there to get a parking place and you don't get there to get your table, you're gonna be standing room. And so, it is, it's an event to be there and, and I'm, again, I'm honored they picked Kaiser to have it in. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, there was a family in my church, and one of their family members went through the program, and the difference that it made was night and day. And I think all of us know people who have needed that second chance, that opportunity to have community come around them in some of the scariest parts of their lives, to try to venture into a space where they have not been previously successful and then succeed. And the support that we, we give not only at this event, but then year-round, the partnership that I know our public safety is part of this, this whole community of public safety education, Schmeckel Community College is a huge partner in this. And many of our employers who are willing to partner to help people get jobs and be successful. So, I appreciate the support of the council, of our community and our business community for people who are on the path to, to success with the reentry. All right, anything further? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item eight B, which is Resolution Amending the Kaiser Little League Park Long Range Planning Task Force, amending R. 2018-2897, repealing R. 2019-2945. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Attorney.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Council. This matter came up at the request of the Little League Long Range Planning Task Force. The task force is set to dissolve on August twenty of this year. At the April twenty-four meeting, the task force agreed by consensus to request a six-month extension to February twenty of 2020. And so, we have prepared a resolution to that effect. The recommendation is to pass the resolution to extend the task force, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the, the staff report? Council President Freeman?
I figured there was comment on there, sorry. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019, amending the Kaiser Little League Park Long Range Planning Task Force, amending Resolution R. 2018-2897, repealing Resolution Number R. 2019-2945.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019, amending the Kaiser Little League Long Range Planning Task Force, amending Resolution Number R. 2018-2897, repealing Resolution Number R. 2019-2945. Further discussion? I appreciate everybody considering extending the work, the work that's being done this summer as they try out some of the ideas discussed. I think it's gonna be extremely fruitful. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item eight C is a resolution adopting policies for the Kaiser Parks Youth Grant Program. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Lawyer.
Thank you, Chris. Madam Mayor, Council. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board discussed amending the Parks Grant Program to provide more opportunities for youth to participate in the program and to add improvements to the park system. The primary change of the program is to allow for materials to be funded for youth projects as opposed to them strictly, being strictly a reimbursement project as the, as the existing grant program requires. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board approved a motion at the June eleventh, 2019 meeting recommending the city council adopt a resolution implementing a youth grant program. There's no direct fiscal impact with this, it's just a matter of a different way or opening more opportunities to use the grant funds. And staff recommends the council adopt the attached resolution. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Seeing none, Council President Freeman. Hold on. Did Council Coler, did you have something? You, you had that look of, yes, but I didn't kinda see that, yeah, I really did think about it. Is that a yes or no?
Yes.
Council Coler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was at the Parks Board when they first brought this up, and a lot of this has to do with youth coming and doing projects for the city. The young man that Mr. Lawyer talked about doing a project down at Kaiser Rapids is one of the young men, Mr. Millis, that has looked at this program and would like to take advantage of that. The project that he's doing will be a small investment from the city's standpoint, maybe two, three, four, maybe four hundred dollars maximum. But the ability to be able to do this with the kids is amazing because, remember, I don't know, you may not have been aware, but there was some high school students that were student staff members of different committees that actually came and wanted to do an Eagle project in the city of Kaiser. And they said, well, you go earn all the money and you can figure out, you know, that's fine, go ahead and do it, but you're gonna have to earn all the money for it. That same kid went over to the city of Salem and said, I wanna do a project, and they funded everything for him. And I just felt that was a terrible travesty, and I think this is correcting that, and I appreciate their efforts.
Thank you very much. We'd like to encourage all of our young people to be able to learn the joys of volunteerism. So, thank you for that. And thank you to the Parks Board for all the work that's gone into developing this as well. I know it's been a lot of discussions on how to craft it, so thank you for your work. Council President Freeman.
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019, adopting policies for Kaiser Parks Youth Grant Program.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019, adopting policies for the Kaiser Parks Youth Grant Program. Discussion? Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item 8D, which is resolution establishing the Charter Review Committee and repeal R 2019-2977. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Attorney?
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Council. The current resolution creating the Charter Review Committee requires that the non-council councillor members be electors or registered voters in the city of Kaiser. At the council work session on July 8, the council indicated that you wanted to review at the regular meeting two options for changing that. And so I prepared this somewhat similar to my staff report at the work session, and I put in two alternatives. Alternative A, keeps the current language regarding the five citizen electors, but adds an additional position that would be chosen directly by the council without VCC recommendation. This additional member would be required to be a Kaiser resident but not an elector. And to be precise, they have to be, excuse me, a resident six months before the date of the resolution and remain a resident throughout the course of their membership on the committee. Alternative B would create a nine-member, the first one was an eight-member committee. The nine-member committee with two councillor members, the seven members at large, would be required to be residents of the city for six months prior to the date of the resolution, and they'd be nominated by the Volunteer Coordinating Committee. And so the recommendation is to review the matter and determine how you want to proceed. The two options, of course, are one for alternative A, adding one member directly chosen without VCC that would need to be a resident, or alternative B, creating a nine-member committee with seven members at large that must be a residence, and then the additional two members would be recommended by the VCC. If the council chooses to go with alternative B, the recommendation would be to direct VCC to move forward, to send the matter to the VCC with recommendations for the two additional members. And we would be reopening that process since the requirements would change, and that's if you are choosing alternative B. Of course, you are free to choose, as I mentioned last at the work session, any other kind of combination of either the appointment process or the makeup of the committee. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report, or the alternatives that Mr. Johnson has prepared for us to consider? I talked it out last week. All right. Council President Freeman, put a motion on the table, and then we can debate it.
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt alternative B, which is to create a nine-member committee with seven members at large who must be residents of the city for at least six months prior to the date of the resolution. These members would be nominated by the Volunteer Coordinating Committee, also known as VCC. In this later alternative, oh, let's see, in this later alternative, VCC would nominate two additional potential members.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt alternative B for the Charter Review Committee, creating a nine-member committee with seven members at large who must be residents of the city for at least six months prior to the date of the resolution. These members would be nominated by the Volunteer Coordinating Committee, and the VCC would nominate two additional potential members. So point of clarification, the five that have been recommended by the VCC would come forward to the council as is, and we would ask them to go back, reopen the process for two additional, changing the requirement from elector to resident. Is that the mover and the second agree? All right. I just want to make sure that we were really clear on that. Discussion?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-1. Councilor Kohler is nigh, is a no. All right. With that, let's go to the consent calendar. Yes?
Do we need to do a minute motion to put it back to VCC?
We do. Thank you. If we chose option two? Yes. Correct you. Thank you for keeping on track. I was just ready to move forward. Council President Freeman? Haven't done that in a while.
Okay. I move that the Kaiser City Council approve by minute motion to direct the council and, is it staff?
Okay, so we need, send the matter to the VCC for the recommendations for, okay, so Shannon, what do we need to do here? Is it staff?
The motion is to send the matter to VCC for the recommendations for the two additional members.
Okay, that's the motion.
Okay. So I move that the Kaiser City Council move that these recommendations go to the Volunteer Coordinating Committee for the two additional members.
Second?
So go through the normal volunteer coordinating process. So they'll be opened, recruited, they'll come to VCC for application, interview, and then the VCC recommends them to council for final approval.
And again, to clarify, as the mayor pointed out, as the five folks have been chosen,
those spots are considered filled.
Correct.
We would bring them all back at one time to council for actual appointment, but there would be appointing only for the two additional spots at this time.
Right, good. And then?
Second, Estee?
Yes, yes. We got the second. All right, thank you. So also to clarify that people who apply before their applications are considered active. So they do not need to reapply, they will be contacted, so they have the option of staying in the process and coming to the Volunteer Coordinating Committee for that, for that process. And if additional people would like to put their application in, they are welcome to do so. So this is an open process. Okay. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for keeping me on track.
Sorry for the confusion.
Nope, we're good, we're good. We figured it out together. Let's go to the consent calendar then. Council President Freeman?
So there's two items on the consent calendar tonight. 9A is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase a 2020 BMW R 125, 1250 RTP motorcycle for the police department. Item 9B is approval of the July 1st, 2019 city council regular session minutes.
Okay, and I'm going to pull B. So Council President Freeman?
Sure. I move that the Kaiser City Council approve the consent calendar item 9A.
Second?
Consent calendar item 9A has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Although it is allowed under city, our council procedures to vote on minutes when you're not present, I choose not to do so. I also have the option to not, so I will be abstaining from this one as I was absent on July 1st, and the meeting was conducted by our very capable council president, Kim Freeman. All right. Yes?
I'll also abstain.
Okay. And Councilor Reed also has chosen to do so. Council President Freeman?
I move the approval of the consent calendar items 9B, the approval of the July 1st, 2019 council, city council regular session minutes.
Second?
Item 9B has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
So motion passes with five ayes and two abstentions, Councilor Reed and Mayor Clark. Council liaison reports. I think last time I picked on Councilor Kohler, so I'm going to pick on Council Herrera.
Okay. All righty. We had a sort of kind of busy week. Today I attended the Kaiser United along with the mayor and my sidekick here. We, a reminder for National Night Out on August 6, and I think the deadline is coming up soon, is that correct?
I heard it from the last time.
Okay. Let's see. Also, I wanted to let folks know about August 9, the Volcano Stadium was a hometown hero's tribute, so if anybody wants to submit, somebody in the community is a hero, that's, deadline is July 26, just call over to the volcanoes. Points of interest next week, I got with 25th, it'll be next week, and we're still looking for a volunteer to fill that position. One position, I believe, is that one or two? Do you know, Kim?
For what?
I know it's one for sure.
I'm sorry, for what?
Points of interest.
Marlene's on that.
Points of interest.
Is it one?
Two. It's two, and we have one applicant.
Okay, we have one applicant. All right, we're still looking for folks, but, and also I wanted to mention that the upcoming event on August 1 for the Call to Action with, and I think that's kind of, I mentioned that on Kaiser United today, but we've been working on it for years, and we've been on, Kathy and I and Marlene have been on it, and now this is, we've worked on it for months, literally almost a year, and we are trying to get folks to show up. It's from 8:30 to 3:30. It's a great lineup of community leaders and our goal, and I'm going to make it real quick, because our goal, we've been doing this for a long time in schools, and we want to make it first-class, our school district first-class, and a lot of it starts with the families. And we want to go deep into, we've got some projects right now, like Holman Elementary, for some summer projects. Those of us that are involved in some of those things, I would encourage the public to attend this so that we can all contribute in this call to action to make these happen, what we've been working on. And I'm not going to get into specifics, but come and check out our speakers and listen to what we've been doing in the last few months, and what we can do to make our community, our schools, and Kaiser School District, the world-class, and that's what we're going to try to do, that's our goal. And so, also, what is the last thing I had here? Oh, Anthony Garcia, who was here not too long ago, was on his way to Kentucky. Did you get that picture, Mayor?
I did, I did.
He took second place in the nation from CTEC, and we're really proud of him.
Thanks.
And the newspaper did not cover that, but I mean, he's kind of shy about it, and he's sending me a picture, but...
We'll share it with the...
Well, it's amazing, I mean, I saw pictures of the whole event, I mean, it's like a big deal, and he was pretty proud of himself, and I've known that little rascal since he was a little baby, but I'm so proud of him, and proud of Kaiser for having, and CTEC for producing these kind of great success stories like Anthony. And Anthony's just one of many, and we all know some of these, that's why we bring him in to recognize him, and that has led to great things from these young people, and I'm just so proud of him. Last thing, let's see what I had here. I have an event, that's a whole different... I guess that's pretty much it. I have been, the exciting news for me is that I've been chosen by Naleo, National Association of Latino Elected Officials nationally, and I'm the only Oregonian that was given a scholarship to attend the Emergency Preparedness in Southern California, and they're going to cover all my costs, and I think it's a really good opportunity for me to bring back information that would help our community in case of an emergency. And this is done in bilingual, in a bilingual setting, and I think it's great, because we have in Kaiser a great, what's the name of our emergency people?
Cert.
Mayor?
Yeah, oh, Cert, yeah.
Cert, and I think I'll be able to, you know, team up with them and would bring, bring some information at a national level of what they're doing, and like, I'm really glad that I applied for this thing, and it was really hard to get in there, and I'm proud that we're, I'm the first Oregonian to be able to get that scholarship, and I thank this, this, you folks for allowing me to be part of that, the Naleo, which is National Latinx Elected Officials. It's been, it's been great, it's produced a lot of good things for our community in terms of LAC and other ways of bringing our community together, including the kids and the adults as well, so that's because of this council that this is happening. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. We look forward to your report back after the conference. Thank you so much. Councilor Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had, I don't have as much as he does, I was on vacation, but I did attend the Kaiser United luncheon today. If you've never attended, I suggest everyone step in on that. It was, it's, it's a meeting of a lot of really good people around the community who do good things for both cities of Salem and Kaiser, and they continue to do so and have great ideas, so I really enjoyed that. And they get these lunches donated every month, and today was, of course, Adam's Ribs, which is one of my favorites, so I think I might come again.
Beat them and they will come.
So Thursday night, I have a Volunteer Coordinating Committee meeting, we'll be appointing a few more volunteers to our committees, but we still have numerous openings and opportunities. Coming up, we'll have like four Parks Boards by the end of the month, we have a couple planning, so a couple Kaiser Points of Interest, and...
Budget?
Thank you, and budget, I'm sorry, and budget. So please go to the website, kaiser.org/volunteer, and check out all the committees that we have. And even if we don't have any openings, we would love, still have you to submit those volunteer applications, because you never know when we're going to have openings throughout the year, and we'd love to keep your name on file, because we, we really could use some, some new faces on some of our committees, they have great ideas they bring, instead of our old, us old guys bringing old ideas. So, and other than that, oh yeah, and then on Saturday and Sunday, don't forget, the National Barbecue Bacon Steak and Bacon Championships at Willow Lake Golf Center, and hopefully they've got their permits all signed, dated, and they're ready to go. Yes? Good. Because I would hate for everybody to show up and there's just no place to go. So that's good.
Wouldn't that be awful?
That would just be awful. And I'm sure we'll all smell the steak and the bacon from our homes.
I'll attract everybody.
Yep.
Thank you so much. Councilor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I kind of feel like I'm cheating on this one, because I've not been a part of the story polls this whole, like, decade that they've been working on, but just in case anybody noticed, they've started, and I've been getting some great updates from Nate, and we have a meeting tomorrow for the Kaiser Public Arts Commission. It's pretty exciting. It's, they got the bell out of the Heritage Center, I don't know if you guys followed that, and they're having it restored, so I kind of feel like, wow, this is so cool, I'm so glad I'm part of it, although I haven't been up to, you know, six months ago. So very exciting stuff going on there, and I think it's going to turn out really neat. Looks like you added some color to a couple things, some stain, and I'd really recommend everybody watch that. There's on Facebook, they've created their Facebook page, and so now they're posting photos and things like that, and it's, it's pretty neat. People are starting to kind of stop by and take a peek at it, so it's nice to see it come to fruition, so that's my update.
Fabulous. Yeah, it was very quick on that bell. We told Lori Christopher at the Heritage Board Meeting, yes, go ahead and look at that, and zoom, you guys rock there the next morning. Good, check that out. That was great news, that would work. Council President Freeman?
Okay. I was not sure which way you were going. Let's see, we had the Planning Commission, which everyone heard about earlier tonight, and I would just encourage, the next meeting is August 14, and it is a public hearing, so we'll encourage people, I'm sure Nate's going to talk a little bit more about that, right? But it's on the Kaiser Revitalization Plan, and also the night of August 14 is the, again, we're resuming the community conversation with the Kaiser Chamber of Commerce, so it will be a busy spot here at City Hall, and the community conversation is around Kaiserfest this time. I attended the Marion County Fair just with my grandson, and I am sorry to say I didn't get to go see Commissioner Bertano's Seculence, because my grandson got a little tired, we had to go home, so, and I saw Bill Lawyer and his wife, Chris, with his grandkids, so it was the place to be Saturday, the Marion County Fair. We talked about August 6, National Night Out, and then August 8, we'll resume our Marion County Commissioner Breakfast. And just a reminder, West Kaiser Neighborhood Association is not meeting until September. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Council Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did have a Kaiser Heritage Board meeting last week, and got the bell, so that was exciting. I attended the Latino Business Alliance this month, and that was actually my first time doing it, and I was really impressed with networking that went on at that, and that was, that was really interesting. As You Like It is going up for the Shakespeare in the Park this weekend, this Kaiser Homegrown Theater, and that will be fantastic, I'm excited about that. And then coming up on July 27 is the Police 5K Foot Pursuit that is benefiting the Special Olympics, and so if you are into 5Ks and want to be a part of that, you can sign up for that on the, you can get to that through the Kaiser.org page if you look at the police. And there's also a 1K Fun Lock option available for that, because sometimes that's a little easier to manage. But anyway, I will be helping out at that, and I look forward to that, and that's all I have for tonight.
All right, thank you very much. Councilor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On July 9, I attended the Chamber Installation Luncheon, where Chief Teague was the keynote speaker. We're fortunate to have someone with his leadership and vision. Thank you, that was very informative, and they got their new board members all installed. And July 9th, I attended the Parks Board Meeting and helped Mr. Millis get everything all put together with his Eagle project. July 10th, I attended the Chamber Board Meeting. They have three main goals, one is getting members to each other's businesses, two, their Kaiser Fear Citizens banquet, and three, protecting members on the business front. And so that's their main goals. One of the, let's see, I attended that meeting for Marlene, thank you, I forgot to mention that. And one of the things they mentioned, I sent a copy of the bill, it was a reimbursement request. Around Christmas time, there was some decorations put up, and there was an incident where some of the equipment ran into a business's building and caused some damage, and I was told that member, there was a city council that was around there that instructed them to have, have it repaired and have the bill sent to the city. And so that was, so they submitted it, didn't have any action to it, Mr. Thompson has paid that, and I think we need to reimburse Mr. Thompson. Mr. Wood.
Council, Council President Freeman.
I would like to speak to that, that is not unfortunately what happened. I was the counselor there that morning, I was not there when the forklift hit the gutter of the business in question. That's something we're going to have to look at next time when we do this. I was told by the chamber that they felt whoever repaired this, and I don't know the company that repaired it, that they were donating this cost, so I think it's a meeting of some people that were involved to get to the bottom of this. So I was told, the last I knew that it was donated by whoever did the repair, so...
Pfeiffer did the repair.
Okay, well, again, I think it's a conversation that needs to happen with chamber staff and city staff, and I'm happy to be there myself.
Okay.
Once I get the information, I can go ahead and contact Pfeiffer and all the other parties involved and figure out what we need to do, so.
Okay.
That was just one of the things brought up in the meeting for us.
Good to follow through.
And July 11th, I attended the Traffic Bike Ped Safety Committee Meeting, it was very interesting, as you can tell from our meeting this evening.
All right, thank you very much. I only have a couple of things to add. On the 10th, I went to the Mobile Amity Mayor's Coalition Dinner at the home of Dallas Mayor Brian Dalton. This is a group of mayors from Marion, Polk, and Yamhill Counties that get together, we try to schedule something quarterly, we're all volunteers, all busy. Mayor Dalton has graciously opened his home every summer since he was elected, and it's just been a nice time to gather, and, you know, the newer mayors can ask questions, share their, their concerns about how to do this job, and those who have been doing it for a little longer can offer support, ideas, or a shoulder to cry on as necessary. So it's a, it's a great, it was great help for me as I was starting out, and something that Mayor Christopher made sure I knew about when I took office, so thank you to all of the mayors who help each other out in our three-county area. Coffee with Kathy, the monthly coffee with, with me, happened on Saturday, the 13th. The host this month was Mommy and Maddie's. We had a very robust conversation about a number of issues, this is a gathering where people come, bring your ideas, bring what you want to talk about, and the people who come set the agenda. The next one will be on August 24th at El Patron at 10 o'clock. Was at Kaiser United today, thank you Meredith, and all of the folks who show up and do such a great job continuing to build that community team and the communications with all of our nonprofits. Just a couple of things coming up, in addition to Shakespeare in the Park, get down there Wednesday through Saturday, get down to the park, it's going to be awesome, come once, come twice, come every night, it's going to be awesome. On the 22nd, I'm going to go to a community reception for the incoming president of Shemecota Community College, Dr. Jessica Howard. Very excited about her, it's going to be a great transition between her and Julie Huckstein. They've worked very well together during this transition, and it's great for us as a community because Shemecota is such an important part of our education environment. On the 23rd, I have SCATS, which is the Salem-Kaiser Area Transportation Study, our Metropolitan Planning Organization. I'll forward the packet to you all when I get it and highlight anything that I want to make sure you guys stay aware of in terms of transportation in our Salem metro area. Then on the 1st of August, I'll be heading down to Medford for the Oregon Mayor's Conference, and I'll be there for three days, and I want to join with everybody else in saying, National Night Out, sign up, get your party registered, so those of us who are riding along can come around, McGruff can be there, the fire district, you won't get them showing up, we might find you, but it's a lot easier if you sign up, so go online, get your party signed up now, it's something Kaiser does really, really well. And are all you all going to be riding on that night?
I'm out of town.
You're out of town, okay, so Councilor Herrera, yes, Councilor Smith?
Sure.
This is Tuesday night, so it's a lot of fun.
It's the 6th, right?
It's the 6th, Tuesday, you'll meet, you'll get instructions to meet here around 5:30, we'll get assigned to a car, and then get to ride around and go to different National Night Out parties. So you good?
We did that last year, I was clear.
Yes, it's a blast. All right, we're good on that. Let's go on to other business, this time it's provided to allow the mayor, city council members, or staff an opportunity to bring newer or old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Tracy.
Thank you, everyone, for the birthday wishes.
Happy birthday.
I have nothing else.
Other than to say happy birthday? Okay. Chief.
Yeah, three things, Blast Camp started, starts tomorrow, runs Tuesday, Thursday. Councilors Herrera and Reed mentioned National Night Out, August 6th, I mentioned that registration can be had on the website. Blast Camp is still up on the website, registration's closed for that.
Mike.
Button, not working.
Chair, there we go. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to start over. Councilors Herrera and Reed mentioned National Night Out, it's August 6th, I said registration is up on the website, it's not, Blast Camp is still up on the website, it starts tomorrow, ends Thursday. I just sent an email to somebody saying, hey, we need to put National Night Out on the website. 5K Foot Pursuit registration is on the website, that's July 27th, registration for that closes July 26th. That's it, thank you.
Bill?
Thank you, Chris. Well, for those of you that hadn't noticed, there's been a bit of activity on River Road over the last couple of months. That activity's winding down, it's not done. As part of that, that's the corner ramp upgrade and traffic signal upgrades being done ahead of the paving project. On this Wednesday and Thursday, the 17th and 18th, starting at 9 o'clock, and hopefully until about 4:00 in the morning, the signal at Manbrun and River Road's going to be shut down and flagged, okay, and they've got work to do there. Then next week, it's either the 24th or the 25th, I'm not sure what day yet, Shemawa and River Road traffic signal is going to be shut down and flagged. I gave the contractor permission to shut that down at 8:00 at night, they've got a lot of work to do there, their option was to do a 9:00 start and close it for two nights, over two nights, or a little earlier start and maybe get it all done in one night, so I gave them a little earlier start. So you will see that happening. After that, that should be about it for, for traffic signal shutdowns. Concrete work should be done in time for the paving to start on the 28th of July, that's a Sunday night. They will start about 8:00 at night, set up traffic control, and work through the night, and be off the road by 5:30. You will see some activity for that project during the daytime hours, contractors got to lower manholes, water valves, gas valves, get them down below the asphalt surface so they can grind off two and a half inches and pave back two and a half inches, so yes, there's been a lot of activity on River Road, there's going to be more. This all should be done, complete, about mid-August, and when I say mid-August, that's all of the lane, not, well, lane striping, arrows, all that stuff, crosswalks, all put back down. The actual paving work should be done in about a week and a half, so.
Wow.
We also have a project starting on Lockhaven Drive at 14th, an additional right-hand turn lane, they were supposed to start today, I kind of, well, I didn't kind, I delayed them because they could not give me assurance that they could have the project done primarily the pedestrian traffic signal work before school starts. And I told them they couldn't start work until they could confirm and give me assurance that would be done, because once they start digging, we're committed, we got to do the work, and I can't, couldn't have that intersection not functioning for kids. I got that assurance today, so they'll be starting work on that this week. So the other thing I wanted to mention, I think during the Parks Board Report, they mentioned Bear Park, staffing up there and cleaned all the underbrush out of Bear Park. If you haven't been up there for a while, you should go take a look, it looks really, really nice, so that's all I have.
Fabulous.
Mr. Brown.
So it was mentioned that we are preparing for our next public hearing of the Planning Commission on August 14th, and that is for a hearing on the Kaiser Revitalization Plan. I was just on the phone today with our consultants, and we were trying, we were working out the details of including a couple of additional examples of some of the cross-sections that may be included in the report, that, that will be included in the report for what the future of River Road might look like. And as you know, one of the, the proposal that went forward is to create a multi-use path on one side, and so we are also including some eventual right-of-way build-out at 84 feet, as that's what our arterial standard is and what that might look like. So we're working on those details just today, but the reason I say that is because we anticipate that to be published here, well, out, released to the public in the next, either tomorrow or the next day. So look for that, there's a lot of information there, it's been a lot of work, as you know, we've been talking about it for some time. And I think I should comment on the bell a little bit, and yes, we did act quickly, and that's because, as was mentioned, the carvers have actually started, and it is pretty darn exciting, but the original design was that they were to carve a bell on the top of the, the top of the pole. However, there was always the caveat, unless the original bell could be obtained. And so as, as luck would have it, Lori, of course, sits on that board with Mayor Clark and Councilor Reed, anyway, as luck would have it, and basically the carvers told me that if you do this, you got to do it right away. And so it was, it was absolutely fortuitous, and I'm, I have to give full credit to the board that was anxious to be able to share on loan the, the bell with us, and they were as excited to have it be displayed as, as we were to, to be able to display it, so. It's going to be fun, and I think everybody's going to really enjoy the process and the finished product.
Mr. Johnson.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. I do not have written communications tonight, agenda input, we'll be meeting on August 6th in regular session at 7:00 PM, work session, I don't believe we have anything scheduled. Oh, how about, yeah, August 5th, good idea, I think we'll meet on the 5th, and the 6th we'll do that National Night Out thing, how about that? Thank you, Noel, for making sure I got that right. So August 5th, 7:00 PM, regular session, August 12th, we do not have a topic, I am not in town, if we come up with something that we need to do...
I'm not either.
You're not either? Shall we cancel the August 12th work session? Anybody object to that? And it's her birthday, okay, we're done right there.
Good memory, right?
August 12th work session is canceled.
I've thought of mine several times.
Oh, yeah, well, we've got two August birthdays, actually. Yes, we've got Council Reed, so...
We have 10 of them.
And we have, and she has, yeah, this one, that's her birthday.
Oh, that's too funny.
And then on August 19th at 7:00 PM, we will meet in regular session. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none, it is 9:05, and we are adjourned.